I'm being seven o'clock. I will call to order the city council meeting for Monday, August 7, 2023, and the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yep.
Vincent.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Austin.
Here.
Micho.
Excused.
Witham.
Here.
Gerting.
Here.
Cameron.
Yeah.
Messier.
Here.
Chair recognizes Counselor Witham who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, which is our recognition of Indigenous people, our Native ancestral Americans. This meeting is taking place on Narikanah, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homelands of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki people past and present. We acknowledge with honor, with gratitude, the land, waterways, living beings, and the Abenaki, the people who have stewed Narikanah throughout the generations. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Four, which is public hearings scheduled for this evening. This evening, we have the sale of the former police station property, 5 Main Street, MAP 11, Lot 210. Chair recognizes the clerk to read the statement for the public hearing.
This public hearing is on the sale of the former police station property, 5 Main Street, MAP 11, Lot 210. The City Council will now hear public comment on the sale of this city property to include: the release by the Somersworth Housing Authority of all the urban renewal restrictions, covenants, and conditions that may have been encumbering this property, and the elimination of an easement for continued public use of the park, also known as the USS Somersworth Pocket Park located on this property.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the sale of the former police station property, 5 Main Street, MAP 11, Lot 210? Please come forward, state your name, your address, and the ward you live in if you have that applicable information. Anyone wish to speak in favor or against the sale of the former police station, 5 Main Street, MAP 11, Lot 210? None being so, I will close the public hearing process to Agenda Item Number Five, which is comments by visitors. The Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinion and views at the city council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7(c), a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. The speaker shall not enter into any debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. At this time, we welcome comments by visitors. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and the ward you live in if you have that applicable information. Good evening and welcome. Just hit the back, Wendy. Just the button.
That one?
Yep.
Hi.
Perfect.
Wendy Berkeley, Ward One. I've been kind of waiting to come to this meeting for two or three weeks now. When I saw on the agenda that there is a proclamation reaffirming Somersworth's commitment to inclusivity and diversity, that was encouraging. I think everyone in this room who knows about what happened to William and Lauren a few weeks ago, and then again, two weeks ago, were pretty rattled by that. And so, that's a really important step, making that proclamation. And I appreciate that the flags are up again. And the mayor wrote in the most recent Mayor's Corner, "It's a struggle." And it's a struggle that not only the city of Somersworth is experiencing or experiencing it. It's big. I fear that it's too late to help William and Lauren feel safe in this community. I know if this happened to me once in my home, let alone twice within a week, I would probably be beating feet pretty fast. So, please don't let this get stale. Don't let this incident get stale because for them, it's very real, and it's very day-to-day. And I can't imagine the trauma that they're feeling right now and the fear. I would never want to feel that way. I sure hope that we can help them feel safe and that they stay and that their wonderful business reopens. I don't know how realistic it that is, but we really do want to continue to be a community of safety and inclusivity. And we don't want to be a refuge for hate. So, please keep this on your minds day-to-day. I think about it every day now when I wake up in my home, what that feeling must be to not feel safe in your home. So, whatever group that you identify with, whatever family members you have who have ever experienced this, please don't let this become yesterday's news because I guarantee for a lot of people, it is not yesterday's news. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments by visitors this evening? Any further comments by visitors? Good evening and welcome.
Laura Berry, 211 Green Street, Ward Four. I am also here to speak about similar instances that just happened. I'm with other members of this community, I believe, in not wanting certain things to go stale. I want them to be acted on because I do believe we are at a turning point in our society, and especially our town or city. The biggest thing that concerns me about a couple of the incidents that have happened recently is I see online posting all the time, but I'm not seeing action from our community. I believe we have to partner with our police, and I also think we need to partner with this council. I'm a big one to say, "Don't just say what went wrong. Let's act on it." So, I'm actually here to suggest to council one way we can move forward. I don't know of any community watches or anything of that. If we have them, I apologize. But I would actually like to see our council partner with our police department and establish city watches in every single one of our districts. I think that would be helpful. I think it would get eyes out there, and it would also stop other things from happening if we have that voice and we have that eye. I don't know how that will work, but I will be the first volunteer for my ward. So, I'm hoping that the city council can partner and move forward with that. I think that will stop people from inside our community and outside our community coming in with malicious intent. And I hope that council does keep this at the forefront. Other thoughts? And that we move on this and make our community safer because it has proved not to be safe as of recently. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments by visitors this evening? Any further comments by visitors? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Neil Larson, 16 Hamilton Street, Ward One. I serve as the Chair of the Somersworth Cemetery Trustees. I would also like to express my support for William and Lauren. What occurred last month was an absolute travesty of justice and a violation of a sacred space. When they first graced us with their presence in our city through a novel one-of-a-kind confectionery space, it added a unique charm to our downtown storefronts. That something like this could even occur in Somersworth is unconscionable, unfathomable, the only and fully beyond comprehension. The only silver lining is the community support that I've seen take place. But to an earlier point, action does need to be taken, and that's the only thing that we can hope for right now. I would like to thank all who've lent a hand in supporting William and Lauren through this tumultuous time. My other topic for tonight concerns the Forest Glade Cemetery Trustees. The primary role of the trustees is to maintain, preserve, and strengthen the integrity of the Forest Glade Cemetery while also promoting the virtues of its sanctity and its significance. I took over the role of Chair in June of 2022, following the untimely passing of our friend Maggie Roberge. Since then, we've had a vacancy which we have found to be quite challenging to fill. Despite the vacancy, we've nonetheless managed to address several key achievements, including significant headstone repairs, a new roof for the Italianate wellhouse, cedar shingle roof with a copper cap adornment. If you haven't seen it yet, do a drive-by. Go on up. Looks tremendous. The Weather Guard team did a really fantastic job. That said, we do still have a significant backlog of needs and action items, as you can probably imagine, for a 22-acre cemetery built in 1851. Filling our fifth seat would allow us the additional bandwidth to accomplish even more than we already have. Recently, we were fortunate enough to connect with Somersworth resident Ally Visser, who has a passion for historic cemeteries and local history, and has expressed a desire to join the trustee team. Her application was submitted on July 13. She was given the indication that her formal nomination would occur tonight on August 7. But subsequently, after noting that her name was absent from tonight's agenda, a call to the city clerk informed her that she would not be included in tonight's agenda and would need to be further vetted by the mayor's office. No indication of when or even if said follow-up would occur. Seeing as the council doesn't meet again until September 18, six weeks from now, the earliest she'd be able to join the trustees wouldn't be until October 9, and that's presuming that the volunteer application form would actually be honored. We've, of course, had a longstanding need to fill this vacancy, 14 months, significant growing needs for the cemetery. I don't understand why this specific application would need to face any type of scrutiny, constraint, or unnecessary delay. So, in the interest of both progress and community engagement in Somersworth, tonight I ask you to please consider, including Ally Visser's nomination, for the Forest Glade Cemetery Trustees into tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments by visitors? Further comments by visitors this evening?
My name's Richard Brooks. I live at 18 Linden Street, Ward One. Not great at speaking off the cuff and didn't really have plan, time to write this up, so bear with me. But I'm not speaking as a representative of the HDC, but do want to address a few concerns related to the HDC as an individual member and as a citizen of the city. There's a lot of topics that play into this topic, a lot of different... Yeah, sorry. Again, not the best public speaker, off the cuff. A lot of things play into this. I clearly could not cover much of them in five minutes. First, the 85 Elm Street. Seriously, I wanted that to proceed. I didn't like voting against it, but imagine if your solar farm was approved as a solar farm and came back with, "Now, we want to put up windmills." They changed it significantly, and I think that where needs to have some consideration in this situation. Form-based codes, I believe, played a part in this as well. It leads developers to believe they want a building as big as possible, build as much as possible, and it kind of contradicts sometimes what the HDC would look for in that particular setting. I even heard Mr. Witham mention that the National Guard proposal might be too big for that site. Well, how big is too big on 85 Elm Street? Everybody's going to have a different line on that. But with a group of people, hopefully, we come to consensus. Obviously, it didn't go the way most of you would have liked. Apologize for that, but again, there's a lot of considerations here. Imagine if the HDC was here in the '60s when urban renewal came through and everybody said, "No," and stopped that. How pleased would people be with that? From my indication, I think a lot of people would have been pleased with that. We would have been called crazy back then, too. Berwick is developing the old prime site with reasonably sized buildings with character. They're doing a great deal of work over there that is turning out to be very well situated to be in a historic downtown. Both Somersworth and Berwick share a similar style of construction throughout. I'd love to see some of that take place over here. That's ultimately, in my opinion, what I think we need to see, stuff that fits. And this is also where the conceptual review, which those particular people at 85 Elm Street had come through and discussed, but they showed up with plans already in place. I would have liked to have seen them come up and say, "Hey, let's hear your concerns before we come up with plans." I envision that what a conceptual review would work better as. Start from zero, and let's discuss what everybody's concerns are, and I think you'd get a better product in the end. Basically, I'm just asking that you don't let this one decision that you all may see or some of you may see as a bad decision, don't let it impact the HDC. We've had many other projects that have gone through and been approved, many of them with good results. In fact, go up to Noble Pines and look across the street. There's a couple houses going up there. I think they fit into this district awesome, and that's what we want. We just want things to fit and keep the character rather than having the large, oversized, out-of-character buildings that destroy a neighborhood character and community's character. So, that's 85 Elm Street. The old National Guard site, I don't know what to think of that. It's a similar situation, 85 Elm. Developers just want to put as much as they can to make as much money as they can, and I know we need affordable housing. I don't believe housing will be affordable in the foreseeable future for several reasons. One of them is inflation. That's doing nobody any good. Corporate takeover of housing. Everybody wants market-rate apartments, and market rate, because we're so close to Portsmouth, is getting crazy. So, as long as corporates run it, they're going to ask the top dollar they can. It's not affordable, but when you start doing the math and statistics, it looks affordable. Local landlords are getting displaced. No longer can someone... You see people renting out the other half of their duplex just to offset their mortgage cost. Now, you've got landlords buying up two, three, four-unit buildings. And again, back to the corporate mentality, "How much money can I make?" Zoning inhibits this. Where can new units be placed? And again, this is why I say all of this leads into so many different facets that we could talk about that all relate to this. You know, it used to be that houses were grouped around neighborhood stores, but now we've lost the neighborhood stores. We've got corporate greed putting two pharmacies across the street from each other. How can it be walkable when the only pharmacies are in one location? Zoning fails to help with that, if you ask me. And zoning makes smaller businesses tough because for small business, mom-and-pop shops, a lot of times, it's a home-based business. Good luck finding a place to do a home-based business in most any town nowadays. Just zoning in general has almost eradicated that option. And then taxes. Taxes just keep going up. I pay $400 a month for my taxes when you figure out the total tax bill. On my modest house, that's expensive. And of course, this is going to get passed along into the rents, no matter where you rent from, because if you can't cover your taxes, upkeep, and so on and so forth, again, everything just gets unaffordable. It's a sad fact in our day of our daily life now. But thank you for letting me vent on this. You all do a great job, and please keep up the good work.
Thank you. Any further comments by visitors? Any further comments by visitors this evening? None being so, it brings us to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the Consent Calendar. Chair will entertain a motion regarding the consent calendar. Counselor Austin.
I'll move for its adoption.
Counselor Austin moves the consent calendar be adopted as so far is presented, seconded by Counselor Gibson. The question for the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nope. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and the consent calendar is adopted. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is comments by counselors. Any comments by counselors this evening? Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know typically we wait to the end to comment, but there's a lot of people here, and I'd like to comment on some of the things that have been spoken to this evening. We'll start with the roof at the cemetery. Wow. If you haven't seen it, it is incredible. It gives me great pleasure to drive by there, where I've worked on that chapel right next to it for years. I did interior, exterior. I did a lot of work there in my business when I was doing painting remodeling. And it's really nice to see that. That's a really nice thing to see, that roof. It's incredible. Let me just comment on HDC. You know, the council, we elect or we appoint these people, and we have a committee, and then we typically criticize that committee for what they do. I see it more times than none. I do believe that, in looking into this, I do believe that they did come back. They started with this plan and ended up with this plan. And they didn't meet, I believe, what the historic wanted or what they brought even to the planning board. So, if we're going to have a committee and we're going to appoint people to it, we might not like what the decisions are of the historic district committee, but we have to live with it because we have that committee, and we take these people for what they know and for what they put into it. So, that's just my thoughts on that. And finally, I want to say and comment about, once again, the National Guard Amory. You know, I said last meeting that Chinburg was a quality builder, and it just goes to show you what type of quality he is. That company saw an issue with the neighbors and what was going on, and they pulled the plug on the project, I believe, the next day or a couple of days later. So, that just goes to show you what type of person or what type of company that they are, not to cause problems with people in the community for the almighty dollar. Thank you, Chinburg, and thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments by counselors? Any further comments by counselors? Counselor Gibson.
Lot of commentary about the HDC, and I understand why people have concerns with it. But as Counselor Vincent said, we appoint people to do a job. They have a charter to operate under, and to the best of my knowledge, they follow that charter. If there are concerns, and I do not want to see the HDC done away with, but if there are concerns with it, then the charter should be reviewed and modified if necessary to meet the concerns of counselors and the community with how it's operating. But don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments by Counselor? Counselor Gerting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just want to comment on a few of the comments by visitors as well. Again, typically, we wait, but I feel like it's important to kind of have them hear some of what we have to say tonight. First, I want to start with the HDC. As I said last meeting, I stand by the decision that they made. I defend the members in their decision. I felt like everyone was very thoughtful. We, as a committee, tried to work with the developer in their initial round of proposals back in, gosh, earlier this year, I believe. Might have even been last year. And was very proud of the initial approval that we provided the developers for 85 Elm Street and felt like it met many of the qualifications that we, as a committee, kind of hold true for the district. And I think, you know, I can at least speak for myself, that I was quite shocked with the plans that were then presented at our recent meeting to change what we had already approved, and it was quite shockingly different from what we had worked very hard to come to agreement on. So, again, I stand with them. Felt like, did a very quality job working on that and am very disappointed in the developers' choices to not work with the committee nor the city on that project. I think it's a shame and a loss for them if that doesn't continue to move forward. They're missing out on what I believe is a pretty amazing city, and maybe we'll hopefully get somebody else who actually cares about working with us and doing what we know is best for the city. So, again, just wanted to defend them and their decision. I think they do great work, so thank you to all of the HDC members. I also wanted to comment on the incident downtown at William Poole's Confectionery Shop. Again, I thank everybody who came out tonight to speak on that. It was really impactful for me. It was scary for me. You know, it really breaks my heart to think that that could happen in our community. I think that, I believe that it is being handled appropriately by the authorities, and I trust our police force. And it seems as if it's now moving on to federal authorities due to potential for a civil case. And I trust that it will be handled well there as well. But I do appreciate the suggestions that were brought forward with how we, as a community, can move forward from this. I continue to be so heartened by the level of support that people have expressed. It has warmed my heart. I certainly, you know, would never want anything like this to happen, but to see the number of community members who came out tonight, who, you know, showed their support online, who donated to William and Lauren, I believe they raised over $30,000, maybe even $35,000 just from just, you know, people like us who care about them. So, hopefully, that can help them kind of get back on their feet and maybe reconsider whether they do or do not want to stay here in our city. I would love for them to reinvest that money back in their business here, but I will certainly let them make that choice for themselves. But I do agree. I think there's a lot that still is left undone. I love the ideas of, you know, the community watch. I would love for citizens to be more aware of what's going on. I had actually, interestingly enough, a phone call from a resident who lives across the street from their business, who was reaching out because their daughter is now driving, and she is afraid to park downtown. And the mother was actually asking for a parking spot closer to where they live, kind of up on Lord's Court behind their apartment, because she was, you know, she witnessed the incident that took place, and the daughter witnessed this. And I don't think anyone's child should see anything of that degree. Even an adult shouldn't really witness that. It sounds, it seems awful. But it makes me, it at least showed to me, like, people do pay attention, but it's also, people are afraid now from this. And I think that we need to show that, one, that is not what Somersworth is, or that's not how we operate, and we don't accept hate in our community, and I know that that's true. But it also, I think, you know, two, I think it means that we just need to show, you know, that we are standing hand-in-hand, arm-in-arm, and watch out for ourselves. And so, I think something like that is a great idea. I would love more ideas. Please reach out with them. I'm racking my brain for what I can do. I was really thankful to see that Senator David Waters immediately was on top of it and worked with the Senate to release a statement in support of our community and in support of William and Lauren. That was great, but there's still so much more. I mean, I challenge the state as a whole, and even the governor, to address hate because this is not just a Somersworth problem. This is not even really just a New Hampshire problem, but we've seen it in multiple communities. Portsmouth was spray-painted with Nazi symbols. There was businesses in Franklin that had their windows smashed in because they had, like, trans pride flags. I think there was another, I want to say there was an incident in Keene. It is across the state, and I guarantee you across this country. And I think that I would love us as a community to find problems that work for us, but I do know that, and I do challenge leaders at even higher levels to take things like this seriously. Watch what you say and think about how your words influence adults and especially children, and how a generation of kids is potentially being raised hearing things that we would have decades ago thought were obscene. And I really, really, it just concerns me, and I challenge the governor, and I challenge people at the federal level to take action at their levels as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments by counselors? Any further, Counselor Witham?
Yeah, briefly, comments regarding the HDC. I'm not sure where the conversation got started with our displeasure with the members of the HDC. I don't recall that at our last meeting. I do recall term charter was used, I'll use their guidelines, was brought up as a potential stumbling block with some of the decisions, and Counselor Gerting and I have had a brief conversation around the fact that the current guidelines do not allow the HDC to take financial elements of a project into consideration. And I think that is a significant shortcoming. I'm not sure I have a solution for that, but I see that as a stumbling block. And I used the example at the last meeting of the retaining wall issue on Grove Street of some years ago as an example of that. And it was at least flagged by the developer of 85 Elm Street as one of the reasons for their changes. So, I have no qualms with anybody on the HDC. They do excellent work. I have sometimes problems with the guidelines, which I understand that we approve here at this level and have approved at this level. It's just one of those things, I guess I had never thought about the financial piece, but it is a piece that I think needs to be somehow incorporated into their guidelines. I think it's an important piece. The other thing I'll say about the HDC, that everything has gotten better about their meetings. They're televised now, but the last meeting where 85 Elm Street came up, and I've heard now innumerable times that... and I've heard now innumerable times that the plans were radically different. I've never seen the new plans. They, you know, they were, everybody was looking at pieces of paper. They weren't put up on easels or on the TV as they were at the prior meetings where you could watch along rather well. So just a word to staff that if developers have those types of changes, they need to have plans submitted so that we can follow along. It would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments by Counselors? Any further comments by Counselors?
None being so, brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is, Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Communications. We have no communications this evening. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Presentations of Petitions. We have none to bring forward this evening. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is the Mayor's Report. Honorable Members of the Council, I submit to you the Mayor's Report for Monday, August 7, 2023. Tonight before the City Council's Resolution 424, reaffirming the City of Somersworth's commitment for inclusiveness and diversity. Our Hilltopper spirit last month on two separate occasions was put to the test. While our history and character are embedded with diversity, we are not immune from acts which test the strength or attempt to weaken or tear the fabric which holds us all together. The foundation of the Hilltopper city and nation is built upon the vast diversity of citizens from which it draws its strengths. We are a community of different ethnicities, religions, and sexual orientations. When one member of our community is attacked, all members of our community are attacked. The Hilltopper spirit of neighbor helping neighbor will continue to shine its light and overpower any darkness, prejudice, or act of hate that attempts to erode the character of who we truly are. Somersworth will stand with William Poole and his husband Lauren and will do everything it can to help our fellow citizens to ensure that justice is brought against the assailants. The ugly face of hate continues to raise its head in all 50 states. It is gaining strength through the open assault on all minorities and members of the LGBTQ+ community by elected officials and others in power who are validating actions of discrimination and hate and assault through the narrative of intolerance they continue to spread, including within our public schools by banning the teachers, by banning the teaching of inclusiveness. Together as a united community, we are reaffirming our commitment to celebrating all, to standing with our neighbors, William and Lauren, and to creating the journey of all who have stood before hate, to create the city and nation we promised to the world we would, a city and state and nation where all are protected and celebrated. Hate has never and will never have a place in Somersworth or America. While Resolution 4-24 has been introduced, while Resolution 4-24 has been introduced by the Mayor's Office with every city councilor reaffirming their commitment as cosponsors, it does not resolve the acts of the past. It once again sends a clear message that the city and its leadership and citizens are committed to continuing the journey of reaching our creed. If ever we are going to reach the goals as a society we aspire to, then we must overcome the prejudice and acts of hatred and intolerance which continue to poison and erode the foundation of what we are built upon. Tonight, this council will reaffirm its strength, reaffirm its commitment, reaffirm its stamina. We know this journey will continue to be long and hard, that it will continue to test us, make us reflect upon who we are as individuals, and, yes, at times, make us feel uncomfortable. However, we do not have a choice but to reach the final line of equality for all. As the late Martin Luther King Jr. so eloquently stated, "We must live together as brothers or perish together as fools." Congratulations to the Somersworth Police Department for organizing the recent National Night Out. The event was once again a huge success celebrating the partnership between the first responders and all members of our community. The strength in community is working together to keep citizens safe. By continuing to foster these positive relationships, we will keep Somersworth on the move in a place where all can be honored and celebrated. Promises made, promises kept. Congratulations to all members of this and past city councils over the past decade, along with members of the Somersworth Fire Department for the official ribbon cutting of our new 21st Century Fire Station, which took place earlier today. Ten years ago, during my first mayoral address, I outlined how this city would hold its commitment to ensuring that our first responders would receive 21st Century Pay and Equipment to carry out their mission to protect us all, how we would follow the lead of students carrying the banners through the streets of Somersworth during the 2013 Christmas Parade, which read, "We Believe in Somersworth." Ten years later, we have delivered on that promise by supporting competitive salaries, contracts, equipment, and today officially dedicating our new fire station. Today's dedication was not just about sticking to our promises. It was reaffirming our commitment to our community, to ourselves, and to once again stating, "We Believe in Somersworth." Congratulations, Somersworth, for today. We once again have celebrated how your history is proud and that your future will remain bright. Somersworth, you are truly on the move. Under nomination, appointments, and elections. Under nomination, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments, the following are being brought forward this evening and placed in nomination. Michelle Mears, Director of Planning and Community Development, for reappointment as a representative to the Strafford MPO Technical Advisory Committee with a term to expire in June 2025. Michael Bobinski, Director of Public Works and Utility, for reappointment as an alternate representative to the Strafford MPO Technical Advisory Committee with a term to expire in June 2025. And Amy LaBelle, for reappointment as the Ward Three Supervisor of the Checklist with a term to expire in June 2028. In accordance with Council Rule 17, the nominations will remain open until the next regular scheduled meeting. And this respectfully concludes my August 7, 2023 Mayor's Report. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Eleven, which is Reports of Standing Committees. And we will start with the Chair of the Finance Committee, Counselor with him.
Thank you. Finance Committee met with all members present on July 27 at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. First item of business was to delve into our vehicle lease purchase agreement. I know the term lease sounds funny, but it's just a term that we use in city government for the purchase of vehicles. We own them outright after a period of years. This year, the city is looking to acquire a number of pieces of rolling stock, two marked police cruisers, one unmarked police cruiser, a fire command SUV, and a new front-end loader with plow equipment. Our initial down payment will be $20,000 with the principal balance of about $500,000 due through the lease purchase agreement. Finance Committee supports moving forward with the lease purchase of all of this rolling stock as it is needed. We did discuss with city staff having two different terms of lease agreements. One would be a five-year lease on the police equipment. As typically, we turn that equipment over relatively quick. And we thought a seven-year lease was appropriate for the fire command SUV, as we typically keep that for a period of 10 years or so. And the front-end loader, because we typically keep that for even in excess of 10 years. So again, Finance Committee supports moving forward with the lease purchase of all of these vehicles. There are a number of resolutions before us for first reading this evening. We'd respectfully request suspension of rules to move forward with the acquisition of all of this equipment this evening. It's all budgeted items, and inventory is thin. And so the quicker we get in the queue to get it, the more likely we are to get it, particularly things like the front-end loader with plow, because that takes a whole lot longer from a delivery perspective. Next item we reviewed was the proposed interim repairs to the Noble Pines water tank. I think, as Council recalls, we've had an assessment done of that water tank, which is like the fifth or sixth oldest water tank in the United States, oddly enough. It's destined for replacement ultimately. But one of the things that we know needs to happen is to replace the aged fiberglass roof that is on top of the water tank that was installed some time ago. We had originally budgeted $154,500 for replacement of that roof. However, as you might well imagine, there are not a lot of vendors that do this type of work. The price has actually increased to $330,000 for this temporary repair. The Finance Committee does not support moving forward with a temporary repair of that cost. Instead, we support moving forward with a more rapid replacement of the water tank at the Noble Pines. To that end, we recommend moving forward, working with Wright Pierce engineers to do the design and ultimately cost estimates. The first item will be for Wright Pierce to develop a scope of work and a price that we can move forward with. In the CIP, it's currently carried at $6.325 million to replace that water tank. We suspect the number will be north of that. However, we need to, again, move forward on the final design work for that. So again, we're working on a price with Wright Pierce. In the meantime, city staff is going to work with Wright Pierce engineers to see if there are any super short-term repairs that can be made to the existing cover to buy us some time. But long and short, we're trying to move faster on the replacement of that water tank. You know, ideally, if we design a scope of work, that gets developed, it goes out to bid. You know, the soonest that we're probably doing anything up there is late 2024, early 2025. So we're still a ways out, because it will take some time for plan development and bidding. But just an update on that. Next item we discussed was potential extension of the Route 108 sewer main. Currently, on Route 108, the sewer main, if you head from, I'll say, Blackwater Road, where the Cumberland Farms is towards Dover, sewer on Route 108 terminates at Willan Drive. There is a very large tract of land beyond that, referred to as the Garabedian property. It's multiple acres, prime development property that is not serviced by City Sewer. There are also a number of other lots in that corridor that would benefit from City Sewer. This has percolated to the top for a discussion if we want to extend that sewer main, because the state continues to proceed down the road of a complete streets upgrade to Route 108. That will include some widening of the roadway, the addition of sidewalks and all of that, which will put a ban on cutting in the pavement for five to seven years on a state roadway. So it would delay us significantly if we wanted to extend sewer out there. So Finance Committee does believe this is the time to look at extending that sewer main, probably through the establishment of a Betterment District. So it would be borne more by the users in that corridor than all ratepayers. So we've asked finance staff, Director Smith, and Public Works Engineering staff to work out some better estimates of what that cost would be and what a Betterment assessment might look like. So we're walking slowly, but we want to continue to move the ball with this potential expansion of the Route 108 sewer. So more to come on that. Under miscellaneous, we did discuss how the police department's purchase, it's actually a lease, here we go again with a lease, but this is actually a lease of their tasers. The expense is approximately $3,000 more than we budgeted. Again, things are escalating, the life expectancy of about five years. The Finance Committee supports moving forward with the lease of the tasers. The additional $3,000 can be found likely within the police department budget, where we're early in the fiscal year. Next item we reviewed was replacement of a pedestrian bridge on the Willan Pond walking trails. We've received a number of estimates. The direction we'd like to proceed is a more permanent replacement of the pedestrian bridge with an aluminum, I'll call it dock-style, bridge that could just be lowered into place, be fabricated off-site. The cost for that bridge would be about $57,000. We think that's high for what we would be getting. So we are soliciting some other quotes in line with an aluminum dock-style bridge. There's a possibility we might be able to use Conservation Commission funding for that, because the Conservation Commission does have funds for that purpose. We've checked the legal status of that, and we could use them if they're in agreement to use them. A brief discussion of a couple of miscellaneous items, but nothing really related to finance, and we adjourned at 5:31. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Government Operations Chair, Counselor Mishu, who is not present this evening. Is there a report from the Vice Chair? No? No report this evening? Okay, thank you. Brings us to the Economic Development Committee Chair, Counselor Austin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the dubious distinction of reporting a non-meeting tonight. Economic Development Committee was charged with taking another look at Resolution 5423, which was to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with Chinburg on the former National Guard readiness center. Shortly after our last meeting, as you've heard so far this evening, that proposal by Chinburg was withdrawn. And so there was no need to have the Economic Development Committee meeting. But we would recommend that when that resolution comes to Council for consideration tonight, that you vote to deny the moving forward of that resolution.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Public Safety Chair, Counselor Peppin.
Yes, thank you. We did have a meeting here at the city council chambers on July 27 at 3:15. First thing on agenda was approving the minutes of March 22 that passed. First item was the vehicle purchase for the police department, which the city managers gave us, went over their memorandum that Chief Macklin gave us previous about the police cruisers, the two-marked SUVs and the one unmarked vehicle. The chief was notified by McPhailen's Fords that they would be no longer, they're no longer producing the 2023 units and that the 2024s are not even going to be on production line right now due to the manufacturing, they're not manufacturing them. So the chief is looking to see if he can find some alternatives to go. He did track down Owen's motor vehicle, has two SUVs ready to go. And McPhailen Ford has a car that is ready for the unmarked car. So we voted three in favor for approving for the resolution to go forward to get these. So they're holding these vehicles, so that's one of the reasons we'd like to waive it tonight. So hopefully, we could get the purchase on them. So they needed to replace some of the, some of our cruisers that really need to be replaced. Council has already talked about the lasers. It was over, but the budget come in a little bit over. The bids went out over a year ago. So basically, it did, the phases are also, the training is also included in that. The extra cartridges are also included in that, in that five-year lease. So that was something else I'd just like to bring out forward. The body cameras should be out on the offices within the next two or three weeks. So you'll probably see them. I don't know if they're out right now, chief. We've had the meeting a couple of weeks ago, but, but just to know that they'll be out. We did discuss the body cameras, how they fit to the new, the new vestes and stuff. The manufacturers changed a lot of the magnetic units, because the magnetics wasn't quite strong enough. So they were being knocked off during some light scuffle or anything else moving. So they've, manufacturers already updated that, so that, we did discuss that. The police chief also gave us an update on the radio council. There's two radio councils that are being upgraded. The stuff has been audited, but it hasn't been delivered yet. He did also go through the wellness uniforms. If you saw the, they're already starting to wear the wellness uniforms now. And the chief has a wellness uniform on, if anybody wants to take a look at it this evening. Our staff, two officers just completed the police academy. They're on field training right now. Hopefully, they'll be on their own very shortly. And we have two more going in for a 16-week training camp, starting in in the very near, in very near future. in the very near future. also Sergeant LaFave is retiring from the police department, and I hate to say she's going to the dock side, she's coming over to the fire academy, she's going to be a fire investigator to the fire academy. So, I hate to say, we're going to lose her as a great officer, and we're really going to miss her as far as that's concerned. The fire chief gave us an update. Basically, he went over the state bid on the Tahoe. Basically, the quote on that is about $75,000 with all the equipment that needs to be put into it. He did explain that Tahoe, it fits a little bit better into the fire service than the SUV Fords, so he did go through that with us. And also, that he'd like to try to keep the Tahoe that they have right now, because we have Assistant Chief coming in after the first of the year, so hopefully that would be going to the Assistant Chief. So, we did discuss that. We also had a lengthy discussion on how often the department SUVs should be replaced, and we're saying that 10-year plan is still pretty feasible. So, we had a motion, it passed 4-0, to support the resolution going for the Tahoe as committee concerned. We went through the fire station project. We had a two-to-six week delay because of the rain, and the stuff is, as you notice, the tire is still not on, but the curbing is set now, and the flagpole has been completed. At the time of the meeting, it wasn't completed, so we went through that. And everything seems to be going pretty well as far as the staffing is, we had two openings, which hopefully are going to be filled in the near future. And that's, and that would be the end of my report there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Point of order, Your Honor.
No objection.
Would this be the appropriate time to see the chief's with his new uniform?
If the chief would like to stand up and maybe do a twirl?
And if that's so, Your Honor?
Kind of walk the?
Would the chief then be, would the chief then be referred as the mannequin? I just want to know.
This is actually a modified version of the wellness uniform, administrative wear, that officers on the street, and I also have one, is a period vest which holds this plus a variety of other things, so, very lightweight, very durable, dry-fit type, officers love it, keeps weight off their back, again, it's a dual purpose, it's the administrative wear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Luckily, this isn't Project Runway where the council will vote whether you're in or out, so, but glad you're able to sport that new uniform and inform the public of some of the new attributes to it, so thank you. Brings us to Public Works and the Environment, Counsel with them.
It's interesting to follow that, so. It goes in the category of other duties as assigned, so well done. Public Works and the Environment met back again on July 27th in the afternoon. Several of these items I reported under Finance, so I don't need to go into too much detail here. Again, we discussed the purchase of the new front-end loader, it is a John Deere loader with a complete new winter plow package. That comes in at a price tag of just under $310,000. We are getting $60,000 for our older unit that we're trading in, pretty high value for an older unit, so we think we're doing pretty well there. Committee unanimously endorses moving forward with that purchase. And again, if we could suspend Council rules to get the ball rolling on all of this fleet stuff tonight, that would be great. I gave the report on the Noble Pines water tank, we had that discussion at Public Works and Environment as well, as well as the Route 108 sewer project. Under DPW updates, Director Babinski brought us up to speed on a number of ongoing projects. I won't go into any great detail on any of them, as some have been reported out, such as the Italianate wellhouse roof being completed, we did get that report. GMI Asphalt has, by and large, completed all their paving work in the city for this summer. It concluded with First Street, it was the last street on their list, and that might have some minor roadside work to be done, but by and large, it is complete. The TAP grant, which is responsible for the new sidewalk on High Street, hopefully many people have seen that, that came out terrific. There are a few punch list items still to be done on that, some stair railings on some of the new granite steps going up to the homes, but by and large, that project is done. That also includes a new sidewalk from Bartlett Avenue to Maplewood School, and then from Maplewood School to just behind the middle school. If you haven't walked that, it's a very nice walkway between all of those school properties, We're moving forward with the Ash Street Butterfly Park project in partnership with Home Depot. And, lastly, reported out that, well, I guess two more items. Unitil has begun the installation of a gas line on Blackwater Road that will ultimately serve our police and public works facilities. That's part of an agreement we had with them relocating their substation to the gravel pit off of Maple Street from its current location on the corner of Bartlett Avenue, sort of a comprehensive project there. And, work has begun, albeit very slow, on the CMAC grant, which is the upgrade of all of our traffic signals from the Blackwater Indigo Hill Road intersection all the way to the Dover Line, new signal controls, signal heads, handicap tip downs, walkway improvements. It's about a million-dollar project as well, which should help with traffic flow through that corridor, so that's all progressing. We had a discussion on a number of other miscellaneous items, but none of which do I need to report out here, so thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gibson?
Just a question. The gas line going in, it's only to service us, or?
No, I think it could service other residents in that corridor. The primary driver was to service our facilities, but the other users should be able to tap into it, I would think, so.
Thank you.
Brings us to the Recreation Committee Chair, Counsel Cameron.
Nothing to note, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 12, which is reports to special committees, any reports to special committees. Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. There has been no Traffic Safety Committee, and I have nothing to report on it, however, I've had two things brought to my attention. One is the Pine Handic, the Pines, the handicap parking and Bartlett Avenue crossing in conflict with the coast bus, if it would be so kind to the city manager to schedule a meeting.
Thank you. Any further reports to special committees? Any further reports to special committees? None being so, city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll be having a Traffic Safety Committee meeting in September. We have four or five items that'll be on the agenda.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump right down in new business. I think the committee chair's pretty much laid out, in a large part, on my written comments to counsel that was included in my written report for this evening's meeting, so I'll try not to be too redundant. Under Resolution 524 in regards to ordering the police SUVs and the unmarked police vehicle under the lease-purchase agreement, I appreciate the council's consideration as indicated by the chair to waive rules. We did locate, the chief did locate a couple of 2023 Ford Explorer SUVs on the Irwin Ford dealership under state bid. They are brand-new without any mileage, and part of the rationale, again, is the 2024 Ford Explorers, at least the information the chief received from the dealerships, was that they were being delayed as far as production. In regards to 624, the front-end loader, again, as noted, will be trading in the old loader and receiving credit towards the purchase of the new loader, and we don't anticipate receiving that probably until the next calendar year, so we'll be utilizing our current loader and then turning it in once the new loader is ready to be picked up. 724 is in regards to lease purchase agreements, and again, the committee recommended and received a memorandum from our Finance Director in regards to bifurcating all of our rolling stock, a few of them into a five-year lease purchase situation, and the others into a seven-year lease purchase situation. In regards to Resolution 824, ordering the fire command vehicle and accessory equipment, again, as discussed at the committee level and endorsed by various committees, we'll move forward with accepting the recommendation of Chief Kremeliger, which was also supported by our equipment mechanic, to pursue the purchase of another Chevy Tahoe. The information I received from our equipment mechanic and from the chief is the Tahoe appears better suited for a fire command vehicle in lieu of the Ford Expedition in terms of durability and functionality, and in addition, it should come at a lower cost. The plan, again, is to present, to utilize the present Tahoe to be passed along to the new deputy chief, which is budgeted for half the fiscal year, so we hope to have somebody aboard come January. In regards to other, the vote to confirm the city's authority to sell the former police station at Five Main Street. The title insurance attorney for the purchaser requested the city council hold the public hearing and take the vote under other. Additionally, he requested the Sommersworth Housing Authority weigh in on these former restrictions to ensure that these can be dismissed without challenge. I did provide you a copy of a letter from the executive director of the SHA, Debbie Evans, regading their support to move forward with the sale without any pass restrictions or easement staying in place. Quickly, a couple informational items. The fiscal year, 2025 to 2030 CIP, the process for the six-year CIP has begun with our city departments. The plan takes several months to complete, and the CIP has then presented a planning board for review and comment prior to submission to the city council by the December 15th city charter deadline. And I provided you a memorandum in regards to how it's laid out. We also asked the school superintendent to work with her staff and the school board in submitting a plan for their facilities. By email, I did inform the council that our main so-called city attorney is retiring at the end of September. I attached a copy of his letter to the city making his announcement. We work with all the attorneys in the Mitchell Municipal Group, and I anticipate, unless directed otherwise by counsel, to again, to continue to utilize them as our city's attorneys. They're familiar with our staff, they know our regulations, our charter, our ordinances, and we have a very good working relationship with them, and they've been very successful in regards to representing the city in legal matters at the district and superior court level. That concludes my comments this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 13, which is nomination appointments and elections. On a nomination appointments and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments, the following are being brought forward this evening and placed in nomination. Michelle Mears, Director of Planning and Community Development for reappointment as a representative to the Strafford MPO Technical Advisory Committee, with a term to expire in June 2025. Michael Babinski, Director of Public Works and Utilities for reappointment as an alternate representative to the Strafford MPO Technical Advisory Committee, with a term to expire in June 2025. Counsel with them.
Yes, if counsel was so inclined, I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules to vote on these two nominees this evening.
Counsel with them moves that city council rules be so far as suspended as to allow both nominees to be voted on and confirmed this evening, seconded by Counsel Cameron. Question for the councils on suspension of council rules, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far as suspended. Counsel with them.
Yes, I'd like to move for the appointment of both Michelle Mears and Michael Babinski to the Strafford MPO.
Counsel with them moves that Michelle Mears and Michael Babinski be so far as confirmed to members of the, as regular member and alternate member, to the Strafford MPO Technical Advisory Committee, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. None being so, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the nominees are so far as confirmed. Also introduced this evening is Amy Labelle for reappointment as a Ward III supervisor of the checklist, with a term to expire in June 2028. In accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments, the scheduled nomination will remain open until the next regular scheduled meeting. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 14, which is items which have been placed upon the table. We have no items that have been placed upon the table. Without objection from counsel, before we go into unfinished business and new, I would like to jump right to other. We do have the purchaser along with some other members here this evening. This is the second meeting that they have waited through very patiently, might I add, so if we can get to other without objection for them. That objection from counsel will move to other, a, a vote to confirm the city's authority to sell Five Main Street property as approved by the city council on June 20th, 2023, in reference to Resolution 5323, with the clarification that by doing so, the city is confirming the release of the property from the 23-year restriction and from the easement reservation for the Pocket Park. Discussion. Counsel with them.
Thank you, fully support this. You know, at the last meeting, there was some public comment, I think regarding the National Guard property, but they pulled this one into it as well, and made it sound like a realtor approached the city and it's how the property got sold, and term I like to use, it's called faction, sounds real, but it's not. The city actually entertained realtors to do the work for us, so just to get the order straight. And the reason that the building sat vacant for so long was not because we didn't want to sell it, but it was not in a saleable state. The city worked with the EPA and State DES to secure various brownfields and other grants to clean the property from asbestos, PCBs, and everything. The building now has a clean slate for what will be the new owners to start with, so it's easier for the city to secure that grant funding than it is for others, which is why it took so long. So, just to get the record straight on that.
Question for the council is the vote to confirm the city's authority to sell Five Main Street properties as approved by the city council on June 20th, 2023. Further discussion? None being so, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the vote is hereby confirmed. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 15, which is unfinished business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 5423 as released by the Economic Development Committee.
Resolution Number 5423, to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement with Chinburg Builders to sell the former National Guard readiness center located on Blackwater Road.
Resolution 5423, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 5423. Counsel Austin. You'll be doing a reverse this time.
Yes, I would move that counsel, I'd make a motion that we oppose this resolution.
Counsel Austin moves that Resolution 5423 not be approved, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of not approving Resolution 5423, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Is the parliamentary situation clear?
No.
Yep, if you are in favor of not approving, so if you are in favor of not approving Resolution 5423, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, then you would state by saying no. So, a yes vote is actually a no vote in this case.
Right.
On the resolution. Is the parliamentary situation clear? Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Withem?
Yes, I vote no.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Resolution 5423 is not approved. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 224.
Resolution Number 224, to authorize the city manager to execute the joint powers agreement of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and to form an electric aggregation committee known as the Sommersworth Community Power Committee.
Resolution 224, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 224. Counsel Girding?
I move for its adoption.
Counsel Girding moves that Resolution 224 be so far as approved, seconded by Counselor Messier. Discussion. Counsel Girding?
Just wanted to say, I'm very excited about this. This has the potential to save residents in the city a lot of money on power. Will be partnering with other communities across the state. Most of the power that is utilized in this coalition is renewable and green, so it's also a sustainable way to get power, and it's a really great opportunity for our community, so quite excited about this.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 224, further discussion? None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 224, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Withem?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron? Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 224 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 324.
Resolution number 324, to authorize the city manager to negotiate a lease extension with Hideout Golf, Inc., to operate and maintain an 18-hole public golf course known as the Oaks Golf Course in Somersworth, New Hampshire.
Resolution 324, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. Further amendment?
No.
No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 324. Counselor Messier.
I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution 324.
Counselor Messier moves that Resolution 324 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. Counselor Witham.
Yes, thank you, fully in support of this. Just a question for the city manager, does the actual lease get brought back in front of us for adoption at some point, or is it fully in your hands after this?
City manager.
No, I will be required to bring it back here for another vote.
Got it, thank you. So, again, just to continue on that, I'm fine with that. I fully support this, I think the partnership has been a good one, and I have no reason to believe that that wouldn't continue. So again, look forward to seeing the final product in front of us. Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 324. Further discussion? Counselor Austin.
I agree, I think that this one makes all the sense in the world. I think we have a great relationship with the Oaks, and you know, to allow them time to recoup their investment in improving that property, I think it makes all the sense in the world. I'm fully supporting this. Thanks.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 324. Further discussion? None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 324, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Stain.
Austin.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 324 is adopted. Brings us to agenda item number 16. Chair recognizes the clerk...
Your Honor, if I may, just procedurally, is it okay if I make a motion to move immediately into second reading of Resolutions 424 through 824 immediately after the first reading? That's a request to do them in a batch, suspend rules.
That is in within order, so you are moving to suspend council rules to allow a second reading. Your motion is for a second reading on Resolution 424 through 824.
Correct.
Seconded by Counselor Vincent. The question for the councils on suspension of council rules to allow a second reading this evening on Resolutions 424 through 824. All those in favor of suspension of council rules, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far as suspended. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 424.
Resolution number 424, proclamation reaffirming the city of Somersworth's commitment for inclusiveness and diversity, August 7, 2023. Whereas the city of Somersworth is proud of its commitment to community diversity and human compassion for all to live in conditions of human dignity, respect, and peace. And whereas the Hilltop City is built upon the vast diversity of citizens from which it draws its strength and sense of community. And whereas the Hilltopper spirit is vested in its essence of neighbor helping neighbor. And whereas we as a community reaffirm our commitment to celebrating with all with our values of liberty and equality while condemning all actions of hate, discrimination, and violence. And whereas the city of Somersworth calls upon all Hilltoppers to commit themselves to join the fight for the elimination of all forms of discrimination and to ensure that everyone has the right to live in conditions of dignity, respect, and peace. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council call upon all Hilltoppers to silence all hate and to embrace each other with respect and love while celebrating the colors of our community. Sponsored by Mayor Dana S. Hilliard, Councilors Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, Robert Gibson, Don Austin, Richard Micho, David A. Witham, Matt Girding, Nancy Cameron, Dennis Messier, approved city attorney.
Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 424.
Resolution number 424, proclamation reaffirming the city of Somersworth's commitment for inclusiveness and diversity.
Resolution 424, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 424. Counselor Girding.
I move for its adoption.
Counselor Girding moves that Resolution 424 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 424, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Skip them.
I apologize. Austin.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 424 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 524.
Resolution number 524, to authorize the city manager to order two SUV-style police cruisers and one unmarked police vehicle, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement, August 7, 2023. Whereas the city of Somersworth's capital improvement plan proposes a replacement schedule for police cruisers and unmarked vehicles to maintain fleet integrity and reduce maintenance costs. And whereas the city of Somersworth's adopted fiscal year 2024 budget provides funding for two SUV-style police cruisers and one unmarked police vehicle through a lease purchase agreement. And whereas the city, the Somersworth City Council would like to improve the fleet of police cruisers by continuing the replacement of traditional sedan-style cruisers with a more modern SUV-style of police cruiser. And whereas the Somersworth City Council would like to improve the fleet of police undercover vehicles and replace them with a newer, more reliable fleet of vehicles. And whereas city staff have evaluated the advantage of the use of a standard vehicle manufacturer acquisition policy and recommends the use of the New Hampshire State Bid List for vehicles on the most efficient method of procuring these new vehicles. And whereas the Public Safety Committee supports the ordering of this equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to order two new SUV-style police cruisers and one new unmarked police vehicle, which will be funded through a lease purchase agreement. Sponsored by Councilors Martin Peppin, Robert Gibson, Don Austin, Richard Micho, David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, approved city attorney.
Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 524.
Resolution number 524, to authorize the city manager to order two SUV-style police cruisers and one unmarked police vehicle, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement.
Resolution 524, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. Counselor Witham.
I'd like to amend the resolution to strike the third whereas, it's not applicable anymore as we've gone completely to SUV-style police cruisers. We're not replacing sedan-style anymore, so it's an inaccurate statement.
Counselor Witham offers the following amendment, is it duly seconded? Seconded by Counselor Vincent. Discussion. None being so, all those in favor of the amendment, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and Resolution 524 is so far as amended. Chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 524 as amended. Counselor Witham, threw me off for a second.
Move for adoption of the resolution as amended.
Counselor Witham moves that Resolution 524 as amended be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Discussion. Counselor Vincent.
I just have one request to add my name to the, to the list of people.
Without objection, we will add your name as a list to the sponsors. Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 524 as amended. Further discussion? None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 524 as amended, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 524 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 624.
Resolution number 624, to authorize the city manager to order one front-end loader and accessory equipment for the Department of Public Works, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement, August 7, 2023. Whereas the city of Somersworth's capital improvement plan proposes a replacement schedule for Public Works equipment to maintain fleet integrity, standardize equipment, and reduce maintenance costs. And whereas the city of Somersworth's adopted fiscal year 2024 budget provides funding for a new loader with accessory equipment through a lease purchase agreement. And whereas city staff evaluated equipment from qualified vendors and recommends contracting with United Construction and Forestry of Pembroke, New Hampshire for the purchase of a John Deere 544P loader with accessory equipment. And whereas the Public Works and Environment Committee supports the ordering of this equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to order one front-end loader with accessory equipment, which is funded in the approved fiscal year 2024 city budget through a lease purchase agreement. Sponsored by Councilors David A. Witham, Dennis Messier, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, Robert Gibson, Don Austin, approved city attorney.
Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 624.
Resolution number 624, to authorize the city manager to order one front-end loader and accessory equipment for the Department of Public Works, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement.
Resolution 624, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 624. Counselor Austin.
I'll move for its adoption.
Counselor Austin moves that Resolution 624 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 624, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 624 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 724.
Resolution number 724, to authorize the city manager to sign a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of city vehicles and equipment. Whereas the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget contains an appropriation for a down payment toward the purchase of the following city vehicles and equipment. Two SUV-style police cruisers, one unmarked police vehicle, one fire command vehicle, one Department of Public Works front-end loader. And whereas city staff solicited quotes for financing this purchase through a lease purchase agreement and recommends entering into a agreement with tax-exempt leasing corp. And whereas the Finance Committee reviewed these quotes with city staff and supports the recommendation including the following lease terms. Utilize a five-year lease for the police cruisers and the unmarked police vehicle. Utilize a seven-year lease for the fire command vehicle and the Department of Public Works front-end loader. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to enter into a lease purchase agreement with tax-exempt leasing corp, utilizing the lease terms recommended by the Finance Committee for the acquisitions of city vehicles and equipment. Sponsored by Councilors Martin Peppin, Robert Gibson, Don Austin, David A. Witham, approved city attorney.
Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 724.
Resolution number 724, to authorize the city manager to sign a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of city vehicles and equipment.
Resolution 724, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 724. Counselor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves the adoption of Resolution 724, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 724, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 724 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 824.
Resolution number 824, to authorize the city manager to order one fire command vehicle and accessory equipment, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement, August 7, 2023. Whereas the city of Somersworth's capital improvement plan proposes a replacement schedule for fire vehicles and equipment to maintain fleet integrity and reduce maintenance costs. And whereas the city of Somersworth's adopted fiscal year 2024 budget provides funding for one fire command vehicle with accessory equipment through a lease purchase agreement. And whereas city staff has evaluated the advantage of the use of a standard vehicle manufacturer acquisition policy and recommends the use of the New Hampshire State Bid List for vehicles as the most efficient method of procuring these new vehicles. And whereas the Public Safety Committee supports the ordering of this vehicle and equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to order one fire command vehicle and accessory equipment, which will be funded through a lease purchase agreement. Sponsored by Councilors Martin Peppin, Dennis Messier, Richard Micho, Kenneth S. Vincent, Robert Gibson, Don Austin, David A. Witham, approved city attorney.
Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 824.
Resolution number 824, to authorize the city manager to order one fire command vehicle and accessory equipment, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement.
Resolution 824, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 824. Counselor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves that Resolution 824 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 824, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Resolution 824 is adopted. Brings us to agenda item number 17, which is closing comments by visitors. Any closing comments by visitors? Please come forward, state your name, your address, and the ward you live in, if you have that applicable information. Any closing comments by visitors this evening? None being so, it'll bring us on to agenda item number 18, which is closing comments by council members, and we'll start with Ward One Counselor, Counselor Peppin.
We talk about the way people react to people and how they treat people. I said this before, it's not just Somersworth, it's nationwide. I don't know why people do the things they do anymore. I think this city has been, the city council, every member up here has been supportive to no matter what your religion is, what your sexual orientation is, or whatever it is, we support it 110% that we accept you. As far as community watch and stuff like that, I think we all need to be community watch. watch. Every resident in the City of Somersworth needs to take and open their eyes up. We have a very willing police department that's not prejudiced against anybody in this community and will act on anything that is brought to their attention. And I think that's important. I mean, I don't know where the nation's going. You hear this country singer basically talks about a small town, about taking their community over, and basically he gets protested because he stands for law and order in the small communities and they won't accept the thing. We shouldn't be accepting that type of behavior in our community. But it's up to us as a community to do it. It's up to us to do it legally, go through the police department, and whatever we need to do, and us to report this stuff to the police department so they can take action on it. I don't know what else this city council can do. I mean, we try very, very hard to make sure that everybody is welcome in this community, and everybody should be welcome in this community, and I hope everybody feels like they're welcome in this community. And I hope just because an incident happens like this, that it doesn't drive people out, that you've got to stand for your rights in this community, and we'll stand with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward 2 Counselor, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I think Counselor Peppin said exactly what I was going to say. I can't agree more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward 3 Counselor, Counselor Gibson.
No comment.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward 4 Counselor, Counselor Austin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that this topic certainly is one that's not going away anytime soon. I think that, you know, we live in a world where we try to say everybody's welcome, everybody's included, and yet there's still factions that say, if you're not like me, then you're not worth anything. I think all we can do from a policy perspective here at city council is continue to reinforce that as leaders of the City of Somersworth, that we do welcome all people into the city and we don't have any regard for, you know, race or religion or anything else. I mean, if you choose to live here in the City of Somersworth, we welcome you and you are welcome as a citizen regardless of who you are, what your beliefs are, how you choose to live your life, who you choose to love. The whole world has gone crazy for a whole lot of different reasons. This is not a Somersworth problem or New Hampshire problem, as Counselor Gerding mentioned before, but all we can continue to do is continue to reinforce that same feeling that we are a community that welcomes all people here regardless, and I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving to the at-large side. At-large Counselor, Counselor Witham.
History for the second time today for me, so this is pretty good. I am turning a corner here. It's more than math and science, I get it. I think it was 1964 when the Federal Civil Rights Act was passed by the U.S. Congress and penned into law, and maybe originally I think there were five protected classes: race, color, religion, national origin, I'm not going to get the fifth one, but something like that, right? Since then, the Federal Civil Rights Act has had a number of amendments, right? To include protections of sexual orientation, and there's a statute here in New Hampshire that aligns with the Federal Civil Rights Act that actually extends protected classes a bit further than the federal law, right? So if you go back to 1964, right, we're talking a long time ago, right? That, and it started before that, right, that this country has been dealing with issues of equality and people not viewing folks for who they are as individuals. This is not a new problem. It is front and center in our community because of what's happened. It's hateful. I am pleased that the state is involved. I don't understand it. I don't understand how people can have such hate. It's not in me, so I don't get it. I can't put myself there. I don't understand it, right? People are entitled to their own beliefs. I'm a practicing Catholic. That doesn't mean I believe everybody should be a practicing Catholic. In fact, there are people that don't believe in religion. That's their choice. I have no hate against that, right? So not being one that's filled with hate, it's very hard for me to understand. I know that we adopted the resolution tonight, and we do on an annual basis, and that certainly is a feel-good measure, but what does it do? I think it shows a bit of support, but what more can be done is a great question. Is it a community watch? I agree with Counselor Peppin, I think we should all be watchful, right? If you see something, say something, I guess is the tagline, right? I call 911 so often that when they answer the phone, they say, Dave, how can we help you today, right? They know my name, right? I'm not sure that's a good thing, but it's a bit embellished, but not too much, right? I do call often, right? I guess it starts with messaging, and that's what we're doing here tonight. It starts with support. It does need to go more than, further than that, but boy, as one city counselor, I'm not sure what that is because I just don't understand it. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large Counselor, Counselor Gerding.
Thank you, Your Honor. I said a lot already, so I'll try to be brief. I just want to thank the mayor for bringing forward this resolution tonight, I believe it was 424, in support of our community's diversity and inclusion. And thank you to the councillors for unanimously supporting it and sponsoring it. Very proud to see us once again reaffirming that. And just wanted to, again, thinking about solutions to this problem and what we can do, I just wanted to kind of reemphasize something that I've been proud of in this community, which is like how much our police force trusts and believes in community policing. And I want to thank the chief for his, you know, emphasis on community policing because I feel like that that style of policing will actually go a long way to really encouraging the community to be involved in efforts to make sure our community is safer and have a good relationship with our police officers and our police force. And I think, again, we're just, you know, at early stages of really trying to implement some of the chief's new ideas and things that I think will go a long way. So I'm excited to see how those community policing efforts will continue to go forward and how they can actually help this potential problem that we are seeing. So just another thought, I think there's a lot there and more to digest, but I know I've already talked a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large Counselor, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. Usually I'm pretty brief at the end of the night, but tonight I have quite a few comments to make. So Mr. Brooks, in response to the HDC committee, my thoughts on this are this: they are in place because of the passion and commitment to the community. You apply and are appointed to the commission. We as a council put our faith in your decisions and the committee and that they put the city first. Perhaps maybe the charter does need to be looked at and maybe some guidelines changed, but that's something that probably could be achievable, and that's just a suggestion. Willem Pond Bridge is music to my ears because as I talk about that almost every council meeting, me and Fenway are out there quite a bit, so I will anxiously look forward to what the end result will be, and hopefully that it would be the aluminum bridge because that will definitely last a lot longer and be there for quite a few years to come. National Night Out was a huge success. Again, thank you to the police department for organizing that. I always enjoy attending the event and seeing the community come together. The fire station, wow. State of the art to keep our firefighters safe and healthy, to keep our city safe. What an honor it was for the mayor to relinquish the ribbon cutting to former Captain Marty Peppin. That was something to see, and it actually brought a little tear to my eye watching that. And then we had the pleasure of pushing engine number five into the station. The residents should be very proud of this facility. I know we are and worked very hard on it. And on my closing, hate exists, not just here but everywhere. As a community, we stand together with William and Lauren, and that's been shown and proven. They were attacked, and we all felt threatened as a city. I certainly hope that after their holiday that they took early, they come back to some resolution to the situation, but also stronger than ever to continue keeping their shop open where we welcome them with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large Counselor, Counselor Messier.
Thank you. I just want to agree with everything that was said concerning the incident that happened. I mean, I was brought up, you treat people the way you want to be treated. So that being said, that, and another thing, I mean, like the song says, ah, I'll forget that one. But I'll go to National Night Out. I went to that one. That was a great showing. All of the volunteers, the vendors, if I just say the police department, someone will say, well, what about us? So that was a good job. And then election signups, I believe, around our next council meeting. So people may want to recruit or keep that in mind for some new people or the same. And then the CIP, I'm hoping that we look at painting of the Forest Glade Cemetery fence as I go by that two or three times a day. It needs some tender loving care. And then the recreational building behind the fire station. Got that nice fire station, got that old dilapidated building. So I'm hoping in the capital improvement plan, we can address those two. And I'll have others, and I'll send the list to Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Austin moves that the city council stand adjournment, seconded by Counselor Gibson. The question for the council is on adjournment. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nope. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the city council stands adjourned.